Good morning, everyone. Ready to start?
Ready.
All right.
Got a long day.
Well, yes, we do. So, good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff and guests. Welcome to the 2026 Budget Work Session. As we've seen over the past year, economic uncertainty continues to shape our planning. While inflation has eased, we're still managing through higher costs, labor challenges, and broader instability that all impact our budget. In response, the city has been preparing for structural imbalance in the general fund, where signatures are projected to outpace revenues. To address this, the team has worked hard to identify both short- and long-term solutions, creating efficiencies, reducing costs, and leveraging outside funding. Key actions include adjusting the property tax mileage and using one-time photo enforcement funds to offset local government fund reductions, implementing departmental cost reductions that began in 2025 and continue into 2026, pursuing grants and external funding to support projects citywide, and investing in long-term efficiencies such as the ERP system and technology upgrades across departments. As in prior years, we're presenting the 2026 budget today for review, followed by a temporary budget resolution later this month and final adoption in early December. The presentation will follow the community service area format, highlighting key changes, program results, and priorities for the coming year. While we won't cover the corporate services and governance CSA as in the past, in detail today, we'll share highlights from technology and finance and a brief update on the Dayton Recovery Plan. With that, I will turn it over to Director Abby Jones Patel. Abby Patel Jones, I do that every time, to, for her team to begin the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager, and hopefully you all can hear me loud and clear. All right, so we will begin with the overview presentation, and good morning, Mayor and Commissioners and City Staff. Today, for the overview presentation, well, I'll be back up. Today's agenda overall includes the overview presentation along with the Justice CSA, Building and Environmental Safety, Community and Economic and Community Development, and Infrastructure CSA. The budget overview presentation, we will go over the background and overview of the policy budget process, will also talk through the proposed expenditure budgets by CSA, and then lastly, we will cover general fund and enterprise fund sources and use. All right, so, as you may recall, in November of 2014, a charter amendment was approved by voters that change our budget process. In 2015, City Commission adopted budget amendments establishing a new budget process, and major component of this new budget process is the community service plan structure. We created the community service area, which we refer to them as CSAs. The focus of this policy budget is based on community priorities and program objectives with an emphasis on community outcome. This image shows our policy budget framework. It starts with many different inputs, such as the input from the community. One of the biggest input we receive from the community is our annual survey. Along with that input, we also receive input from the commission, from the City Manager's Office, and our organization. From these inputs, community priorities are developed. Those priorities, the program objectives, goals, and activities which departments carry out on a day-to-day basis to do the work in the community. We measure these activities through program performance, which looks at efficiencies, effectiveness, and impactfulness of these programs in our community. The organization uses the performance management system to evaluate program results with the overarching goal of driving community outcomes. And these, driving these community outcomes is associated with the resources provided each year. The cycle is meant to be ever-evolving. It's a constant loop between resource allocation, community input, implementation, and evaluation. So, the community service areas are comprised of program areas made up of departments and divisions providing services that share an integrated mission to address community priorities. CSAs are linked together to form the framework for the city's policy budget. And as we talked about it before, we have five CSAs, which includes Economic and Community Development, Infrastructure, Corporate Services and Governance, Building and Environmental Safety, and Justice. Presentation focus today, the City Manager's recommended budget is presented by CSA, community priority, and programs that address each priority. Given the specific investments in the community through the Dayton Recovery Plan, so we will also talk through about the Dayton Recovery Plan and where we are as of October, mid-October. Then, each of these presentations by CSAs and priorities will cover the following parts of the city's budget. Operating budget includes general fund, select special project funds, and other special revenue funds, along with roadway maintenance, enterprise funds, major grants, and internal service funds. Capital budget includes enterprise capital, general capital, capital HUD, and select other special revenue funds. What's not being presented today are most special project funds, bond retirement fund, non-major grants, and most other special revenue. All right, so this slide shows budget by fund. Starting with the general fund, you can see it's up by 6.21%, which mainly reflects the annual waiting season, as well as the inflationary increase in contracts and material. Looking at the enterprise funds collectively, which includes water, sewer, stormwater, education, they are up 4.4% or $8.1 million compared to 2025. Within the enterprise funds, aviation and water funds are driving most of the increase with a smaller increase in sewer and stormwater fund. The growth in aviation and water is largely due to the higher contracts and material costs and planned capital. The internal service fund actually decreases by 3.6%, mainly because of the workers' compensation fund, which includes one-time capital investments in 2025 that are not there in 2026. The bond is also up significantly by 32.1%. Again, this is also due to the higher capital investment plan. The HUD fund shows a huge increase of 234.0, almost 235%, which is tied to the $2.5 million one-time grant that we received in 2025 for the lead abatement. Photo enforcement decreases because there is no cash transfer this year. It had been budgeted over the past three years. That was one of the budget solutions City Manager mentioned in her opening remarks. Last year, meaning this year, is the last year for that photo enforcement fund transfer, where we transferred $3.8 million to cover the deficit that's created by the reduction in local government fund. Just as a reminder, though, for the photo enforcement fund, it includes two different funds. It includes the original photo enforcement fund, and it also includes our newly created photo enforcement fund, where we are depositing the reimbursement received from the state of Ohio for the revenue collected in the school zone. This fund is specially created because the revenue is restricted to be spent on school safety. Next, I want to point out the mediation. You can see 100% reduction in the mediation MRU grant line, and that's because of the grant that we will see from the states are funding for the mediation MRU operation. That grant is no longer active in 2026, so this operation is rolled into the general fund now. The right-of-way fund increases by 40, almost 50%, or $362,000, and mainly due to the capital budget for services base fund decreased by 26.2% or about $16,000. This is, again, is a one-time grant that we received in 2025 that was used to install recording equipment and software in seven courtrooms, which is not there in 2026. And then we have a new addition of the One Ohio Opier Settlement Fund line, as you can see in the bottom, which has a total budget of $233,400. This budget is for the GROW program, which was funded from the general fund, and now it is going to be funded from the One Ohio Opier Settlement Fund. This is another budget solution that we have for 2026. By freeing up the funding in the general fund, we are able to continue to provide funding for the community paramedicine program in 2026. And just to note, the One Ohio Opier Settlement Fund, where the GROW program is funded from, includes one EMT and one police officer that provides services in the community. Overall, because all of these increases and decreases, we are seeing about 3.9% increase in the operating budgets, which we will discuss more in detail as we go through the presentation by CSA. And for the capital side, general capital is up by 40%. That is a big increase year-over-year. This is, 2026 is a year, as you may recall, we issued that every other year. 2026 is the next debt cycle, and so that's why we're seeing that increase in the general capital, as well as the enterprise capital, which is up by 703%. That big increase is associated with the PIBAS project specifically in the Water Department, which we will talk more in detail in the infrastructure presentation when we talk through the capital projects. And overall, the total increase for the operating in capital is $386.00, or 66.7%. Shows the distribution of the operating budget. As you can see, the largest portion of the operating budget is in the general fund at 47%, followed by water at 17%, internal service funds at 12%, sewer 10%, and aviation 7%. All of the other budget by fund that we talked through earlier has a smaller percentage between 2.13% and 0.2%, which is what you see in the top right-hand corner. All right, this chart shows the budget by CSA. The largest dollar increase is in the corporate services and governance CSA, as you can see, and that's largely due to the 27th pay. In 2026, we will experience a 27th pay for three out of our five pay groups, which includes PFBB and TE. This 27th pay is budgeted in the non-departmental budget for all general fund departments. Along with that, this particular CSA also includes higher costs for electricity and property taxes paid to the Miami Conservancy District for the flood protection system, both of which have a big increase, approximately $600,000 each in 2026. And so that's why we're seeing that big increase in the corporate services and governance. For Economic and Community Development, the increase includes the $2.5 million, as I talked through, that is related to the lead hazel reduction grant. Building and Environmental Safety has an increase mostly due to the year-over-year inflationary growth for both personnel and contracts and material. And then the last one I want to point out is the internal service fund, which has a decrease of $2.2 million, and that has to do with the reduction in budget for the workers' compensation, investment that they're budgeted in 2025. All right, here we can see the distribution of the operating budget by CSA. Building and Environmental Safety has the largest share at 31%, followed by, excuse me, glasses on as I can see, followed by infrastructure, which is at 23%, justice at 18%, internal service funds at 12%, corporate services and governance is at 10%, and lastly, Economic and Community Development at 6%. The other thing I want to point out here is the distribution between the operating and capital budget. As you can see, it's almost 50/50. Operating budget is 54% and capital is 46% of the pie. In the past, this is largely because of the larger capital plan that we have planned in 2026. If you recall last year's presentation, the distribution for capital was 14% and operating was 86%, so that's a big change in 2026. All right, so this table shows the budget by priorities. As you may recall, our organization restructured the performance management system, and this is the third year the budget is presented by CSA and community priority. To highlight some of the community priorities, encourage healthy and sustainable growth has an increase of $2.5 million, and that, again, is related to the hazel removal grant from HUD. Guarantee fiscally responsible, accountable, and transparent governments. Again, this is related to pay groups for PFBB and TE pay groups. Provide quality service with excellent customer service. Also saw an increase, this increase is driven by the higher electricity cost, as I mentioned, and the property tax for the Miami Conservancy District. The other two items I want to highlight is the provide responsive emergency services, which is where we have the budget for our fire department, and promote just and safe city, which is where we have our budget for the police. All right, so proposed budget for Justice CSA is $92.7 million, which is a $2.4 million increase or 2.6%. Now, we're going to talk through each of the CSA's budget here shortly, and so I'm not going to dive too much deeper into this, so we can kind of move along as planned. But just to highlight, in this particular CSA, police program accounts for $2.4 million of the proposed budget increase, which is pretty much the entire budget increase, and this is primarily due to the contractual wage adjustment. The increase is also offset by the elimination of transfer that we talked about from the photo enforcement fund into the general fund, which previously helped offset the local government fund reduction in '23, '24, and '25. The proposed budget for Building and Environmental Safety CSA is $157 million, which is an increase of $7.1 million. This is the largest increase for any CSA at 4.8%. Water makes up $3.6 million of the increase, largely due to the planned capital improvements in the source water protection area, higher costs for flood removal and operational supplies, including the lab supplies that's needed to maintain water operation, and the electrical maintenance cost, and also the biosolids land application cost, which has gone up in 2026. And then the fire program makes up $2.5 million budget increase, largely driven by the wage inflation and continuation of the Engine 10, which is cross-staffed with two medics. This includes funding of 12 positions, which we started funding in 2024. The proposed budget for Economic and Community Development CSA is $31.00, almost $32 million, which is an increase of $3.9 million or 13.9%. Here, aviation assumes a 9.9% increase of nearly $800,000, largely because of the technology capital investments and direct cost adjustments and annual wage inflation. The budget for Infrastructure CSA is $124.9 million, which is nearly a $2 million increase year-over-year at 1.6%. Out of the $2 million, water program makes up $1.8 million or 1.9%. Again, this increase in the water program is driven by the higher contracts and materials cost, wage inflation, and capital improvement transfers, which are partially offset by a $1.6 million reduction in debt service from retired bonds. And then aviation makes up also a $1.3 million increase at 6.3%, reflecting inflationary wage adjustment, higher taxes, utility costs, and maintenance costs. Proposed budget for corporate services and governance is $112.4 million, which is a $4.3 million increase year-over-year increase at 4%. Corporate services and governance, as we talked about it earlier, includes an increase in the non-departmental for the 27th pay. Another increase I want to point out is in the IT department. The budget has increased 17.4%, and this is largely due to higher funding for technology, specifically wipe system replacement for the organization that is planned for 2026. All right, here we have the, you all have seen this slide before, as the organization plans to move the operations or continue the programs in the community and the services from the operating budget, we are also continuing our efforts in implementing the DRP. As of October 2025, the city has encumbered projects that totals $89.3 million, which means we have $12.6 million remaining to be awarded. And out of the nearly $102 million investments in the DRP, $49.6 million are remaining to be spent. But we are almost halfway, halfway there. All right, so now we're going to turn our attention back to the general fund and take a look at revenues and where we expect to end this year. The table on the slide shows a five-year history of actual general fund revenues, along with the 2025's original budget and revised estimate, and then the last section highlights 2026 proposed budget. Looking at 2025, revenues are up $2.5 million compared to the original budget, and this is largely due to the allocation of NATO cost reimbursement that has been charged by the state of Ohio. And then uses for 2025 are also up similar amount at $2.8 million or 1.2%. You'll also notice a sizable increase in the courses from 2021 to 2024, and this is related to our revenue replacement, revenue replacement. As you can see, our first year for the ORPA revenue replacement was 2021, and the last year was 2024. Looking at 2026, total revenue estimate is down by 0.5% or just over $1 million. We met with, as we do annually, met with Revenue Advisors Group to bet our revenue estimate, and based on the conversation, we anticipate the revenues to be either flat or take a slightly downturn in 2026. Uses are also up by a similar amount. So, as you can see, the proposed budget for 2026 general fund is balanced. In order for us to balance this budget, we are utilizing 2.0, almost 2.5 million cash reserve. In addition to lighting the cash reserve, we are also using 6.6 million of one-time sources. These one-time sources include $5 million from the ORPA interest earnings that we have collected since we have received the $138 million from the federal government, and then 1.3 million is coming from the FEMA tornado reimbursement. And as you can see, the gap is much bigger this year, and we are needing to utilize in addition to the cash reserve, we're needing to utilize these additional one-time sources to balance the budget. The last important takeaway on this slide I want to point out is that we anticipate ending the year with approximately $1.5 million in the use of cash reserve for 2025, which is slightly more than what we had originally budgeted at $1.2 million. Slide shows the 2026 revenue forecast, and you are familiar with the categories. These are the same categories we utilize in our monthly finance community briefings. Again, I want to reiterate that we do meet with our Revenue Advisors Group, which is made up of the area business leaders to bet our revenue projections, and these revenue projections are based on the feedback that we received from that group. So, starting with income tax, we are projecting a 0.9% increase or about $1.4 million over the 2025's revised estimate. Property tax will remain flat in 2026 due to the lag between property tax valuation and the collection. Since 2020, well, 2023 was the, a year when we see change in property tax, property values. That was our triennial update. Our six-tennial update is coming up in 2026, but because of that lag, we won't see the increase in property tax until 2027. You'll also recall, as the City Manager mentioned in her opening remarks, about the knowledge rate change, which we did change from 4.5 mil to 5 mil coming into the general fund, beginning in 2025, which is adding approximately $850,000 in the general fund sources. EMS fees are projected to go about 4.1%, and this is reflective of the change in the Medicare rate, which rose from $149 to $259 that took effect in the beginning of 2024. Now, you might ask, that was 2024, we're talking about 2026. There is a lag in the EMS fee by the time we bill and we receive revenue, so we continue to see that slight increase in our EMS fee revenue collections on a monthly basis. In addition to that, we're also accounting for the growth that is due to the improved billing processes with our healthcare providers and one-time rate adjustment for the commercial insurance payers. Local government fund revenues are also expected to increase by about $2.5 million. The reduction related to traffic enforcement camera fines have now stabilized. By August of 2024, all prior year liabilities were met, and so for 2025, local government fund adjustments are now based on slowly, solely, the prior 12-month data that we report to the state every July. And so, because of that stabilization, we are able to more accurately predict going forward our local government fund revenue. Fines and forfeits are 12.7%, are up 12.7%, and these are driven by the enhanced public safety enforcement, including the Dragon Cam for traffic monitoring and traffic coming, well, the same. This increases our efforts to make sure that we are reducing traffic-related accidents and fatalities. And then finally, other revenues are down due to the absence of the one-time transfer that I mentioned, the $3.8 million transfer we did this year, that was the last year of that transfer from the photo enforcement fund, and so that's why we're seeing reduction in the other. So, with a slight decline overall of 0.5% in revenues from 2025 revised estimate and growth in expenses, it was necessary for us to utilize almost $2 million cash reserve and 6.6 million of one-time sources to balance 2025. Here, we can see the general fund by category, high-level categories showing the personnel and contract materials, so you can see personnel.
I just want to point out that that is a victory, because when we were looking five years ago and four years and three years ago, we were in this year. So, the fact that we're using $4 million out of cash reserve, that's a victory for you all, so congratulations. Somebody had to point that out.
So, as you can see here, personnel is up 9.3 million, almost $9.4 million, or 5.9%. Also, you can see that 27th pay for 2026, we're estimating this 27th pay to be approximately $3.2 million. I do want to point out that there is a source for this 27th pay. You may recall, we talk about doing this transfer on an annual basis so that we're not caught off guard. We do plan for it, and so the $3.2 million is covered from that transfer that we do on an annual basis. And then contracts and material is up by $1.8 million or 3.9%. As for the, so that's our operating budget in totality. Operating expenses are up $14.4 million. As for the, so that's our operating budget in totality, operating um expenses are up fourteen point four million dollars. Um, as for the capital investment or investments, which um you can see, we have done a slight reduction um in our capital equipment in projects by hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well as the development fund transfer that we do on an annual basis. Um, we've reduced that from three point two five million dollars to three point one million dollars, so we can balance the budget. Um, in totality, um the total for twenty twenty six is going up by fourteen million dollars. So you can see the stark difference here between the growth in revenue, um which is slightly down based on our projections and um the growth in expenditures is six point one percent. Um, hence the structural imbalance and needing to um utilize the one-time budget solutions, which we will talk through right here. So as you can see here, um we are utilizing, again, this is the uh mistake, fifth year, fourth year of our health insurance holiday, fourth year of health insurance holiday. Um, this is the last year, um where we will be able to utilize the health insurance holiday. Um, it totals to about one point five million dollars, this is just for the general fund. Um, we're also using, we talked through that uh FEMA tornado reimbursement, uh which is one point three million dollars. The five million dollar interest earnings from the um upper revenue, um use of cash reserve of about four million dollars. Um, and then we also have seven hundred and sixty six thousand eight hundred of budget cuts, um which the city manager also mentioned earlier. Uh, these budget cuts include uh reduction in fire and uh recruit class size. Um, once we realized that we had a structural imbalance, um we looked for ways to reduce the cost, so that was one of uh the budget reduction. Um, it doesn't impact the operations um as much, but it does slow us down in replacing our uh public safety forces as we see attrition. Um, the other reduction is in um capital contingency, we reduce that by two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then uh we also took a reduction in our general um uh contingency that we use throughout the year um for the uh unexpected, unexpected budget increases, we reduce that by three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the reduction are then offset by uh some of the increases, um we did have to increase our um vacancy savings. Um, or I should say decrease our vacancy savings, um which added cost as we're filling these positions. Um, we do want to make sure that our assumptions for vacancy savings are in line with um where our um uh our forces are, um our personnel are. And so we did take a uh slight uptake um in our vacancy savings, um and then um uh also we needed to increase our transfer um for the twenty seventh pay. Um, and so um that's where the other increase came from, major increase came from. Um, we have set our twenty seventh pay transfer the same amount. Um, uh at least since I have been here, it does not account for any kind of wage inflation. Um, and so um uh we need to account for that wage inflation, so we went ahead and um upgraded that transfer to add an additional fifty thousand dollar annually, um so that next time when that twenty seventh pay comes around, we have sufficient fund balance to cover the expense. Um, in addition to uh the budget cuts, um we talked through the uh reduction in investments uh with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we also took um a reduction in our uh uh fringe rates. Um, and this is uh also based on actual trends, um which totals to approximately five hundred and eighty two thousand nine hundred. Um, we are also utilizing uh one-time revenue sources of three hundred thousand dollars from the unclaimed fund. Um, and then um lastly, we have eight hundred and seventy five thousand six hundred of new revenue, which includes a little over five hundred thousand dollars from the uh Dragon Cam usage um to monitor the uh traffic. Um, and then in addition to that, uh we talked about the E M S rate change uh for commercial insurance payer, which accounts for about three hundred thousand dollars of that increase, and then seventy thousand dollars is coming from uh the bond, bail bond revenue um that we receive from the Montgomery. All right, so budget key takeaways, um general fund revenue in twenty twenty six are expected to increase by a little over a million dollars compared to the revised twenty twenty five forecast. Um, this is, this is really flat revenue projections. Um, and our major revenue sources are uh income tax, property tax, and base collection, um which uh all three are nearly flat for twenty twenty six. Um, expenses growth has outpaced, as you saw, um this revenue performance, and the proposed general fund budget is balanced with those uh one-time revenue sources, which includes that six point six million dollars and the use of cash reserve of four million dollars. Um, because of this structural imbalance, long-term cost containment will be necessary. Um, the top government will likely continue to outpace the growth in revenue along with the inevitability of, can I swear, of the business cycle change. Um, in addition to that, um there is also uncertainty from the federal budget actions that also, that could impact the hard funding, um additional grant funding for for our ability to support services in the community. Um, although we have this structural imbalance, the city manager's proposed twenty twenty six budget maintains the your dollars, your neighborhood services, um and it also preserves the current service levels with the focus on improving customer service. Um, as for the um aviation and water funds, um the revenue are up seven point one percent compared to the twenty twenty five as a result of the housing deployments, including property concession usage. For twenty twenty six, revenues are projected to climb nine point seven percent as the interest in travel continues to remain strong. For water funds, revenues are up seven point two four percent, and sewer fund are up eight point six percent as of second quarter of twenty twenty five, based on the three-year rate increase implemented in twenty twenty three. Rates for other jurisdictions are substituted by the cost of service model. And for twenty twenty six, the use of continued, we're trying to keep pace with the service delivery costs and maintain the utility. All right, now we will, uh for the next three slides, we'll cover water, sewer, and strong water funds. Um, all three waters, sewer and strong water funds have a program, a fund balance to balance the budget. Uh, this particular slide for the water fund um is a combination of water and both of protection. Uh, so for water fund, as you can see here, total sources are projected to grow by three point three million dollars or three point eight percent. Um, revenues are expected to grow nine point two percent or six point five million dollars, which are based on the projected adjustments for twenty twenty six. Um, the expenditure side, year-over-year uh budget increases are impacted by the annual wage adjustment as well as higher capital transfer to support the ongoing capital improvements. And we will talk through those capital improvement in the infrastructure uh presentation, specifically for water. For sanitary sewer, um total sources are projected to go up by one point six million or three point one percent. Um, we can see inflation reduction in the new balance year-over-year, um that is offset by the uh high revenue projections of five million dollars or eleven point two percent. Again, the revenue projections are based on the projected rate adjustments, which haven't taken place yet. Um, for year-over-year increases, um we do largely reflective of the rising cost for financial exposure related to the land application. Um, there is higher cost, and we can see this cost go up year-over-year, so um uh that's one of the item. Um, the other thing is uh expanded maintenance needs for the electrical system. Um, again, uh as with the water fund, we are also seeing a higher capital transfer for the sanitary sewer fund, so we can continue to support that on, support those ongoing capital investment. Um, and then lastly, we have seen a slight increase in administrative services charges um that are aligned with the wage inflation for administrative and financial services provided by the water fund. For water fund, um also started up by three hundred and nine thousand one hundred or two point nine percent. Um, five hundred and forty nine thousand seven hundred is coming from the revenue projections. Again, the revenue projections are based on the projected rate adjustment. Um, expenditure sides, um the increases are largely reflective of wage inflation, which is partly offset by the lower cost for municipal positions. And municipal positions are coming in at at lower cost than people who are needing or emptying these things. And then, um as with the uh sewer fund, uh we're also seeing an increase in administrative, administrative charges which are aligned with the wage inflation for administrative and financial services provided by the water. For aviation, um projected aviation, we are talking about twenty five. Um, personnel costs for aviation are reflected by the wage adjustment as well as higher overhead needs. Um, on the contract and material side, the uh aviation support services, due to um higher contract materials, specifically for planning services and um for aviation and operating facilities, cost increases are due to the temp services, um along with technical services and fuel cost. Um, and then for the right weather support increases, um are going to be in the property tax increases from Montgomery. All right, so as we look ahead, um in addition to our structural, there are several other challenges, challenges and pressures that we continue to experience and could potentially experience our future revenue. Um, our revenues are heavily reliant on the business cycle, um and what happens or what occurs um throughout the world, throughout the economy, throughout the nation. Um, and so um, uh one of the, one of the first thing uh we want to talk about is the aging infrastructure and equipment. Um, even though we've making, we've made significant strides in investing in our capital equipment and infrastructure upgrades over the past several years, um we still have quite a bit of need. Um, we have a lot of uh aging equipment that still needs replacement. And so that replacement cost um is continuing to be a uh ongoing issue for us. Um, not only to make sure that um we are setting aside funds to replace, but also to make sure that we're maintaining our inventory, and we have um, um we are going along um as the replacement schedule calls for. Um, employee turnover and burnout um also remains a concern across uh major departments in organizations. Recruitment and retention are specifically an issue, especially for the public safety uh forces, um as well as some of the specialized position. Um, we are still having this ongoing legal issue. Um, again, like I talked about, the social and geopolitical um issues are also a cause for, cause for concern um as things change around the world, um that may um impact us and our revenues in our regional economy. Um, also the, the uh changes at the uh state and federal policy level, level uh are impactful uh for our revenue performance and the uh other funding that we receive from the state and federal source. Um, the uh federal government shutdown, um that is a major concern. Um, uh we could potentially see reduction in our funding, um especially the hard funding um is a major concern. Um, uh one other thing I would point out is uh uh one of the federal and green funding, um is the median center. We talked a little bit about it earlier, uh that um the program was initially funded from the and so as these grant funding sources dry up, we are going to have to identify um sources to maintain those resources in our community. Um, cybersecurity and IT investment um are also um a cause for concern. We do that in the community that are growing um in both frequently and sophistication. Um, that puts an additional pressure on the installation um for our need to invent in IT systems, not just to modernize, but also to protect our critical infrastructure. Um, and then um lastly, the business cycle. Um, uh, there is a potential for recession, um we have uh you know, when we were talking about uh the recession in twenty nineteen, um that was the longest economic expansion. At that time, um we that, we have continued that economic expansion, um even though uh we have gone through a whole pandemic. Um, and so um the business cycle is, we've been talking about the recession for the last few years, but um we have seen the economy flow down. Um, you may all uh also have heard the news about the Federal Reserve cutting the interest rate, and so the economy is slowing down. Um, there is the potential for recession, and if that, that does happen, then we are going to see a reduction in our revenue because our revenues are very sensitive uh to the business cycle. And so, um overall, general fund revenues are expected to continue to fly nicely. Um, with extended, you continue to face revenue growth, um use of one-time sources offers us a short-term relief um as the city works to address structural imbalance, especially in the general fund. Um, while um we are working through our day-to-day operation and for the twenty twenty six budget plan, um we are also continuing with our day-to-day coverage plan. Um, it is underway and nearing completion, with roughly half of the new operations spent today. Um, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six work plan um focuses on continued implementation with, like we talked about, twelve point six million dollars that are yet to be awarded. Um, and then forty nine point six million dollars yet to be spent, primarily on city debt. And that is the overview presentation, any questions?
Sure, I think challenging, I think probably the biggest uh concern that I think about right now is the uncertainty.
Micah?
All right, you good?
Yes.
Okay, probably the biggest concern that I have right now, just thinking about the uh uncertainty in the and um maybe I'm sure about how to address some of those concerns, but um thinking about it pretty much is all we can do right now, explaining to the best of your ability. Uh, how are you looking at trying to prepare for so much uncertainty? I know you talked about a few moments ago, but um what do you use your best guess in terms of how to prepare for some of the kind of things yet unknown?
So, um just generally speaking, we are meeting our federal and state lobbyists more frequently. They, they, we get an update every week as to activity happening um with federal government and and the state. Um, and that is, first of all, one of the ways we're monitoring and trying to stay abreast of even discussions that might be happening, you know, that aren't, you know, meeting yet to change, but could be influencing change. Um, and, and we have also inventoried all of that funding really well between state and federal so that we know exactly what could be affected with a change. Um, and that is uh been very helpful for us to understand order of magnitude, but also to the line item. If they're talking about significant program cuts or changes. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, the only other thing I would add is we're also looking at the, in, in that inventory, but also looking at the funding um that has been awarded um and the funding where we have actually signed the agreement versus the funding that has been allocated but not yet awarded uh so that we can distinguish between funding we are um uh uh very certain that we will receive because it has been passed. Um, and we have signed the agreement versus which we might lose so that we can better prepare.
Yeah, I'm also thinking about the uh the revenue such a loss from better employees. And um
And um, um, we've got a bidding bond from, you may not, you know, the government shutdown. And uh, I'm willing to give you any thoughts on that.
So that was one of the um items that we discussed with our revenue advisors group. Um, um, hence our projection uh to maintain the income tax projections to be flat um because we are anticipating um the reduction from that specific income tax uh coming from the federal government.
It could come in, in two forms, Mayor. It could come in two forms, Mayor. We have the buyouts that are funded through September. So we won't see until November the impact of that to that income tax source. And then, of course, right now, as we have the, you know, the sequestering and we don't have it, federal employees reporting to work and now conversations about not going back in retro pay. I mean, that could all be quite a mess, um and we're monitoring that.
Okay. Um, questions, commissioners? Just lost the questions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you very much. I appreciate the um, the overview this morning. Just a couple of questions. Are we um, appreciate all of the, as far as the provider, but more so in particular, I think it's chart twenty-eight, where you really highlight some of the challenges that were facing, yes, twenty-nine, excuse me. Um, so thank you very much for that. Just a couple of questions. On chart left, what? Do you have a breakdown of parks paving taking last? And the reason why I'm asking in particular to paving, because I know paving is also identified in our uh CDBG dollars for our consolidated plan for the next five years. So I'm curious as to what that is. We're allocating those dollars from federal funds, I think it's estimated to be around five million. What is the projected number for paving under your dollars, your neighborhood? And then how many loan miles are, are we yet to resurface? I know I'm getting in a week, but if you can give us that information, I don't know if that comes at a later date or whatever have you.
So for the dollar amount, um, the uh line where you see that your dollars, your neighborhood paving park and lot, um, I was thinking of point eight million dollars, it is almost five point nine million dollars is dedicated towards paving. How much? Five point nine?
Five point nine.
Mm-hmm. And then the remaining is for parks and vacant lot. Um, because vacant lot is around uh, is, is, I don't know, six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, um, and parks is two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. And I think this goes back to Commissioner Fairchild's question that he had posed in the past in terms of how many lane mouths that are left for us to resurface. Because I know we put a, a great dent in resurfacing a lot of our residential streets. And the reason why I'm asking this particular question again, because all of the various different challenges that we have, my question is if in fact there needs to be a shift from our um, our HUD dollars for the allocations of CDBG in particular for repaving, if we know that the other areas may be a concern, is there an opportunity for us to look at where we should address some of those other areas of concern?
Yeah, so a couple of things. The, your dollars, your neighborhood, that is only the issue six funding. That does not include HUD funding. This is strictly the quarter percent tax included, um, coming from that quarter percent tax request. Um, funding, um, we have allocated one point nine million dollars um in twenty twenty-six um for resurfacing, which is split between residential resurfacing and alley resurfacing. Um, we have, you are correct, um, we have uh achieved um over seventy uh PPI, which is satisfactory rating that we were uh hoping to achieve. Um, and so we have shifted um uh not entirely, but we have shifted our focus slightly um to now making sure that we're doing the crack ceiling so that we can maintain these roads that we have paved and we do not see um a, a major degradation um that we saw um before we started investing in the residential resurfacing. Now, we will talk through more about the PPI and the lane miles in our infrastructure presentation. Uh, David Escobar, our city engineer, is planning to provide that update.
If we could just highlight that, I think, thank you, in terms of like the conversation and some of the challenges to see where we are, where we are, and if do adjustments need to be made, not in this particular area, but more so in our HUD dollars um or CDBG. Then my other question is, what are the remaining proj- projects? You said that there is twelve point six million remaining to be awarded on chart part eighteen. What are those remaining projects?
Um, we can give you the list. Uh, the list is also available on uh the dashboard itself for the, for the uh data recovery plan, where we can drill down into exactly what projects are remaining to be awarded. Um, from the top of my head, uh, one of the, uh, one of the many that helps uh is uh demolition. Uh, we still have a few contracts to be awarded for demolition, uh, but we can give you the
Okay. And that's the demolition to meet us to the, to meet the goal of the eleven hundred. Is that what you're speaking of? Okay, thank you. And then also, I, I think this may be my last question. I have two more. Okay. Uh, chart twenty-nine, you still spoke to like the aging infrastructure and then there was a lot of investment that has been made in those areas. In particular, with uh data recovery dollars, I believe it was maybe like eight million, I may have that number wrong, but there was significant, maybe even a hundred and something million. There was, no, it wasn't a hundred and something million, because we only had a hundred and thirty-eight. So maybe back down to the, the fifty, whatever have you. But all very short, there was uh great investment that was made in infrastructure and equipment. So what are some of the examples of what needs to be made? You said that we have some other investments that we need to make. What are you speaking to? And what are some of the, the aging infrastructure? Because we made a great dent in those areas.
Sure, we can follow up with a, our five-year capital plan, so you can see all of those um investments that we need to make for five years. There's clearly um a cycle of replacement with fleet, whether it's small or large. Um, that is a big component of that, and some of our large fleet are really expensive. And in, in the years, um, twenty-one through twenty-four, when we had the uh ARPA surplus, we did spend a lot of time investing in um capital equipment. Uh, we've also spent a lot of money investing in IT infrastructure because of the cybersecurity um increased threats, but we can provide an update to the commission on the five-year capital plan so you can see in totality all of the investments that are still needed.
Okay, thank you. And I think you touched on uh my next question in terms of cybersecurity. Like, I know that's something that we want to continue on an ongoing basis, but like, what are those other investments and that can be included with the information that you're going to provide us? And then, um, you spoke to employee turnover and turnout. And I'm very sensitive to that, and you're absolutely correct in being mindful of these areas. So where are we total right now with the the number of employees, sixteen, eighteen hundred, and are we seeing um turnovers or what, what are the particular concerns there?
The particular concern is really in uh the safety forces. Um, we have been able to, because we increased our efforts in filling those positions, we were um um, we were being creative in um how we fill those positions, so we have increased the overall strength. Um, well, increased the positions to meet the overall strength for both fire and police. Um, however, um, we are still seeing um higher attrition in our recruit class.
Yeah, the attrition for um sworn-in officers has actually leveled back out. We've kind of normalized back to where we were prior to pandemic and, and, and that whole mess. But um, we are still seeing a lot of drop-off in our classes. And so I know both um chiefs are working through that to, you know, try and make sure that we have an academy that, you know, create, one, that we're recruiting people with realistic, and they've made some great strides in that too. So people have a really great understanding about what does it mean to be a firefighter or a police officer in the city of Dayton. Uh, they've done a lot of improvement there. And then also looking at the academy programs themselves to make sure where we might be creating artificial barriers or um and, and having, and i- improving on that experience as well uh as it relates to uh graduation.
Thank you. Uh, another question. So chart twenty-one, we have identified uh three point two for development. So my question is, we're so in line with chart twenty-nine. If we know of all these various different chart challenges that we're going to be faced with, maybe it's an opportunity for us, and I know it may be frowned upon, but this may be something we need to consider for us to slow down in development, considering that chart twenty-nine, there are so many unknowns um and challenges, we know that the needs are going to be greater from our community members. Um, and so it's an opportunity for us to pivot, to pause, to look at how in fact we're going to address the needs of the residents in the city of Dayton. So I would just, just footstump that for us to really consider um how we are looking at development and how we are also making sure that we are sensitive to the challenges at the federal and state level.
Understood. The, the development, the three point two, which is obviously a really, really small part of our budget, remember leverages up to ten times that. So the, that would be um a- and we know we can't cut our way out of our situation, right? We have to keep investing, and actually, the bond rating agencies have applauded us on our strategic development and investments because we know we have to keep growing certain areas, uh affordable housing, of course, being such a major crisis. So it is um something that we look at very closely, but with a leverage of ten plus to one, you know, that's a really big um other people's money that we, we utilize for that three point one as well.
I completely understand, but it doesn't make any sense for you to build all this stuff, houses, whatever have you, if people don't have the money to pay for it, right? If they don't have the means to to keep those various different projects um operable. So I would just ask that.
Those investments, remember, though, Commissioner, are also in economic development and entrepreneurial development. So their job creation within the city for residents as well.
Yeah. The only other thing I would add in here um is that the added three point two five, or the three point one one a big portion of that funding goes towards funding compact sharing. And so there are routine expenses that are coming out of this kind of money. Um, not all of this funding is available for development.
Thank you. I'm, I'm noted. Familiar. Last question. Um, Marshall, just have a, a comment. If you could just please provide us with the updates from the federal, the lobbyists that you so we can be abreast on as to what's going on, um, because we're getting questioned and, and we just need to be in the know. Especially as we start making some very uh difficult circumstances under this current climate. Thank you. Yes, I'm good.
Thank you. I think I have two questions in there related to what's the mayor, the current already covered. Um, one being the uncertainty of federal funding. My understanding was we were expecting a decrease in the EV funds because it brought the number of communities who were eligible for those funds. In our budget, I see we paid a two point five million dollar increase. Just trying to reconcile those two pieces.
So the um HUD funding, which includes CBBG and home, um, did reduce. Um, it didn't go down um from um twenty-four to twenty-five. The new point five million dollar increase is for a one-time grant that we received from HUD for lead a bit.
And, and remember, there's a lag because we're still dealing with twenty-five um and, and twenty-six. We anticipate twenty-seven is where significant cuts can come in.
And then regarding cyber, cybersecurity, IT investments, where are we in our timeline with the ERP? Because this has a key piece to replacing aging infrastructure and increasing our security with bringing that online.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, thank you for the question. We are well underway in our efforts, efforts to identify a, a new ERP system. Currently, we have received uh responses to the RFP that was let earlier uh in the fall, and so we start reviewing those proposals this Friday. So our timeline is basically by January, February, we should be doing um demonstrations uh with our top-tier uh vendors and have, hopefully have a selection by April.
Thank you. Do we anticipate some savings on cybersecurity once that system's in place?
Well, uh, the ERP in and of itself will um give us some efficiencies in how we currently are doing some of our current state operations. Uh, it does bring with it some additional security measures, primarily on how we manage and treat our data. And so we have brought on a data architect, um, who's helping us early build a data management strategy and a governance plan so that we can make sure that we not only are securing our data, but we are also managing that data in a way that protects um sensitive information in our, in our infrastructure. So the ERP will provide the infrastructure, but the governance will basically help us maintain and manage how we uh how our data is accessed.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
No, I'm pretty good. I'm pretty good uh on uh the questions. My colleagues have covered a lot of ground here. But I do appreciate that comment about uh economic development, how it does leverage. Uh, I think that's really important, and to be clear, it's really important that we grow our way out of these. It's just no matter how they arrive. And then also, um, I have appreciated the, the conversation with the lobbyists um about uh threats that are on the horizon. I think it's really important that you all are engaging in that way with them to anticipate any kind of threat. So uh, really appreciate the update. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Lady Mayor, uh, I just want to say that in general, I really appreciate the focus on the future. Um, a lot of cities and a lot of places now are caught up in the emergencies of the moment, and we, of course, have to deal with those too. But you can see from this budget, whether it's the ERP, as just mentioned, uh, the bill dedicating what one, one and a half percent of our budget to development in tough times, uh, that we're looking toward the future and make sure that uh we're planning not just for this year and resolving the emergencies at now, but for five and ten years in the future. And that's been a consistent, I appreciate that, both from you all and from my colleagues, because there's been consistent support for that of you. Thank you.
Okay, I can't understand that of, uh, the issue of uh development equals growth and the growth and development in any part of the city, up the entire city. We're finished.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we will move to the Justice CSA. It's already seated. We're ready to roll.